Waiting for Chris to get done with his. He's right. Gray.
Here.
Jerem. Milton.
Here.
Pauls.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Gurnett.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the publication invocation by Councilmember Amy Milton.
For the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take a moment because our city has suffered quite a tragedy over this last week that I know all of us have followed with some hope, but we all found out that little five-year-old Josue Ramirez Marinaro was killed along with his mother Ismea. We're very thankful that his little brother Angel was found alive, but this is a very sad day, I think, for our city, and the whole city has come together and, I think, is in mourning for this family and this child. But I also want to say that during this last week, what I saw with the various agencies around our city, the Omaha Fire Department, Omaha Police Department, Douglas County Sheriffs, Waterloo Search and Rescue, we even had federal agencies that came in. Everybody worked together and everybody worked to try and find this little boy and worked together on this investigation. So I think that's something the city should be very proud of, and I'm very, very heartened by how the city has come together to support this family in their time of need. So with that, I'd like to just take a moment of silence for Josue and his mother Ismea. Thank you.
City clerk, South Side Publication on Dinner Record, on May 8th. Notice for council registers the council meeting, May 12th, 2015. At current copy of Meetings Act, this posting in white binder on the East Ball of Legislative Chambers.
Good afternoon, welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law and may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of the issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only track from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn on for a mute electronic devices.
This is zoning ordinance on following plan board attachments. Item number five, ordinance to rezone property located at 1502-1506 Mike Fahey Street from Downtown Service District to Central Business District. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number five is today. Are there any proponents?
Yeah, here we go.
Come on down.
Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street, Omaha, 68154. Changes zone. From existing piece of property that's been down in the redevelopment area, right by where the yard project is located. Want to go from the Downtown Service District to the Central Business District project. There's actually an existing restaurant in this location that helps out parking requirements and for future redevelopment. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Roll call. Gray. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Gurnett. Mr. President.
Yes.
Five is passed, seven to zero. Item number six, ordinance to rezone property located at 1515 Cummings Street from Downtown Service District to Central Business District. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number six is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Thielen.
Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street, Omaha, 68154. I don't have my exhibit with me, but this is the location. Same situation, Downtown Service District looking to go to Central Business District and continue to opportunities for redevelopment in this location. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Roll call. Gray. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Gurnett. Mr. President.
Yes.
Six is passed, seven to zero. Seven and eight, or one case seven, is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the area of civic importance overlay district to incorporate in that district property located northeast of Cummings Street at 25th Avenue. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And eight is ordinance to rezone the property from Development Reserve District to R-7 Medium Density Multifamily Residential District to Community Commercial District. A Planning Board, Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearings on number seven and eight are today. Proponents, please.
Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street, Omaha, 68154. This is rezoning for the future CHI clinic at this location. There will be combining these parcels together, and so we have some zoning district issues to clean up, so we're all under one zoning district. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Roll call. Gray. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Gurnett. Mr. President.
Yes.
Seven and eight are past, seven to zero.
Take firework in that area.
Items nine through 12, or one case nine, is ordinance to rezone property located northwest of 30th Street and Sorensen Parkway from R4 Single Family Residential District High Density and General Industrial District to R4 Single Family Residential District High Density. Ten is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI II PL District to incorporate in that district this property. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Eleven is resolution, the platter entitled Fort Omaha Expansion with the attached conditions is accepted in preparation for final plot is authorized. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Twelve is resolution, the plat transmitted here with entitled Fort Omaha Expansion. A minor plat inside the city limits is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearings on numbers nine, 10, 11, and 12 are today. Proponents, please.
Bob Griffin, Will Berhard Griffin and Associates, 3552 Farnham Street, and we're the applicant's engineer and land surveyor for the project. Also have Mr. Jim Grotriean, Executive Vice President for MCC here as well, and we're available for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Gray. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Gurnett. Mr. President.
Yes.
Nine through 12 are past, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Next case is 13 through 16. Thirteen is ordinance to rezone property located southwest of 36th and Jones Street from R7 Medium Density Multifamily Residential District to R8 High Density Multifamily Residential District. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Fourteen is resolution, platter entitled Corbin Subdivision Replat 1, along with attached conditions, is hereby accepted in preparation for final plot is hereby authorized. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Fifteen is the plat, a minor plat inside the city, is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And sixteen is subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearings on numbers 13 through 16 are today. Proponents, please. Mr. Jovan.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the developer, simply here to answer any questions that you might have on this particular matter. The last thing you'll see here coming up in a couple of weeks is the redevelopment agreement, but you've already heard the redevelopment plan and, of course, the platter. So here to answer questions. And I think it'll be a great project. We work very closely with the Blackstone Neighborhood Association and their board, and I appreciate Mr. Jerem's assistance on setting up those various meetings and getting everyone together, but I think in the end, everyone's really happy the way this is going to turn out and look, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? This is number 13 through 16. These are proponents. Are you a proponent?
I'm a opponent.
Okay, we'll move to opponents. Go ahead.
Rex Kildus in 700 South 35th Avenue. I'm complaining about that this, our city's been torn down by a bunch of insanely greedy developers that are tearing down the history of our city. What I really wanted to say is this the third time the atheist Republican Party has brought an economic collapse in our country. My grandparents lived through both economic collapses. The first one was 1890s. The last one was 1930s. In 1930s, they eliminated 6 million jobs. This time, they eliminated 30 million jobs. So, you know, we're in a depression. They're overdeveloping the hell out of our city when there's no economy left in America. We can't, we're not going to have an economy until we get our jobs back from overseas. We've been sold out. I want to know about Republicans, they don't know how to say no. The Democrats know how to say no. So I say, you know, that property next to my house, that had, was a block full of houses that there was nothing wrong with, and they tore them down. That property should be rezoned residential. That's going to cause a lot of problems in my neighborhood. Traffic problems. So I'd say, I'd say you tell, tell these developers that the party's over. No more. Say no. That's most, your job is to say no for the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seen none, public hearing's closed. Mr. Thompson.
I'm just a little confused as to whether I'm the party of yes or no. I'm a little bit confused today because sometimes I'm told I'm yes and sometimes I'm told I'm Did you want a rebuttal, sir? Yes.
Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road. All I would say about this is this was 14 single-family residential houses, most of which had significant code violations, and they were dilapidated and they were in relatively poor condition. I think that what you'll see by this particular project being in an ATI and the type of development that it's going to be, it's going to be a vast improvement to what was originally there. And I guess that's all I would add. Thank you.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem. Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirteen through 16 are past, seven to zero. Seventeen and eighteen is one case. Seventeen is ordinance to rezone property located at 4557 South 38th Street from General Commercial District to Community Commercial District. Eighteen is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the major commercial corridor overlay district to incorporate in that district property located at 4557 South 38th Street. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearings on number seventeen and eighteen are today. Proponents, please. Seen none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Gray. Jerem. Milton.
Yes.
Pauls. Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Seventeen and eighteen are past, seven to zero. Nineteen is ordinance to rezone the property located at 6033 P Street from Development Reserve District to R4 Single Family Residential District High Density, a portion of which property is located within the flood fringe overlay district. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number nineteen is today. Proponents, please.
Yeah, hi, my name is Tito Flores, and I own the property at 6033 P Street, and my intention is to create a lot because I think it's bigger enough for the making of a house, something, you know.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to know what I need to do for approval, something, you know, for approval.
Okay. So you're in favor of this item today as a matter of process, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents today? Public hearing's closed.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem. Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Nineteen is past, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number 20, ordinance to rezone property located at 7351 Bedford Avenue from R1 Single Family Residential District Large Lots to R4 Single Family Residential District High Density. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 20 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty is past, seven to zero. Item number 21, ordinance to rezone property located at 13617 Corby Street from R3 Single Family Residential District Medium Density to R4 Single Family Residential District High Density. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 21 is today. Are there any proponents?
I'm Mitch Wiseman, the lot owner. Can you answer any questions?
And your address, too?
Address, 3216 North 120th Court, number 218, Omaha, 68164.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty one is past, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, due to no meeting being held May 26th, agenda item number 22 shall be delivered three weeks to June 2nd, 2015, for publication of public hearing. Special use permit, item number 23, resolution, special use permit application submitted by Wood Somma Real Estate Group for special use permit to allow restaurant, drive-in, or fast food in a general industrial district. Property also located within ACI II 65 area of civic importance overlay district. Located at 7425 Dodge Street is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. B is communications opposing.
Public hearing on number 23 is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Thielen.
Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street, Omaha, 68154. This is a redevelopment project on an existing piece of property on 74th and Dodge. We're taking a portion of this building, roughly 5,000 square feet, and adding a restaurant There's a special use permit over this property due to zoning, and so we have been through planning board, we're under conditional approval through planning board, have met those conditions, and they're before you now. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents?
I oppose all these projects.
Your name?
We cannot have a community where there are no jobs and nothing's made here anymore.
We just need your name and address for the record.
Rex Kildus in 700 South 35th Avenue. It's going to take years to dig out this hole we've been dug for the American people. And nobody, nobody trying to dig us out of this. They bankrupted our city, they're now trying to bankrupt our state, they bankrupted the federal government. They voted for tax cuts for the rich in favor of letting our infrastructure rot.
So Rex, we need to keep the comments to the actual item here. This is a restaurant proposal at 74th and Dodge. Do you have comments to that?
Well, I'm just, I'm opposed to any more development in this city. It does, it's insane to tear our city down when we're in a deep hole. So stop it. You guys have the power to stop this in madness. These developers, they've been stuffing their pockets with money for 35 years straight. Everyone here, all your expenses have gone up because of the insanity in Washington. So say no. No more. We don't have, we're not, we're going in the wrong direction, we're going deeper into a hole, so say no.
Thank you. Other opponents, please.
My name is Sendana Teft. I go by Cindy. 7447 Farnham Street. I would really like the city council to not approve the special use permit for this property. Basically, I own a property that's within this area, and I feel that the, and I wrote a letter to the council and to the planning board. First of all, traffic flow here is there, I actually just do not see how traffic could flow through this area. The other thing is, is the trash. And then the other part is, actually, it's mostly the, I'm also, I'm really worried about the traffic pattern. My business is right here, and there is a fence right here. This is the Mexican consulate, and so traffic comes down through here and thinks they can go this direction. Traffic also comes through here, and there's quite frequently low trucks parked here, excuse me. For anyone to access the area that this drive-through restaurant would be, they would have to drive through parking lots, which is incredibly dangerous. The only access actually from Dodge Street is right here. People coming from 74th and Dodge here have to come down a hill, and there's no stop sign here, but if they come down this hill and drive in here, there's also a rise, I mean, it actually goes down in here, so you cannot see traffic. So I'm very concerned about traffic flow here. I'm also concerned about the traffic pattern that would impact my business. I actually also live here. The council very graciously approved my special use permit or conditional use permit last year so that I also live in this area. So my, my concern is twofold. Number one, this is my business area. My clients really complain if there's a lot of trash or if they can't get to my location very well. And then also because of the location where I live, I also am very concerned about having more fast food restaurants through here. I was under the impression that this area is being part of crossroads redevelopment area, would also be mixed use instead of just continuing to bring in more fast food or more restaurants. Granted, my business does not generate income tax or tax as a restaurant would, but I've been in this location since 1995. I've owned the building since 2004, and I also have independent contractors who work with me that would be impacted by the traffic pattern and then also just having more fast food restaurants in this area. So I would very graciously ask you to not approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seen none. Mr. Thielen, do you want to respond before our close public hearing here?
Well, I guess I'll, I'll start by saying this is, you know, this is zoned general industrial. Everything within the retail standpoint is under special use permit. The very basic zoning district allows for a lot heavier uses than are here today. The traffic pattern which he's speaking is actually being improved upon in this particular situation, is this parking lot's actually gotten a lot more efficient. As far as people driving down through off of our site, you know, a good several hundred feet trying to get through the other way, I would say that, you know, it's hard for me to speak to that. This area has been full of restaurants for quite some time, and it's become a destination for restaurants such as Socorabana, which I visit a lot, which I enjoy. So I think with traffic's pattern standpoint, I think we've improved upon the situation, and I don't, I can't speak to off-site traffic patterns, but I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Are you able to say what kind of restaurant it is, or is that?
It's a, it'll be a, it'll be a fast food restaurant, type restaurant, but sit down in an outdoor patio.
Okay. Mr. Jerem.
Mr. Thielen, isn't the code require that the dumpster be screened?
It does.
So, and it has to be the same architecture and materials that the building's made out of, right?
That is correct.
So, to the extent that the opponent was concerned about the dumpster, the garbage will be
Yes.
...contained in a screened unit.
That is correct. We also increased it some of the landscaping around the perimeter as well, but yes, we have to meet all the ACI overlay district requirements of any other business and building in that area.
Thank you. Thank you. Public hearing's closed. Mr. Fanslaw, could you comment also on the concern about, you know, the zoning analysis, the interplay with the potential crossroads redevelopment area and traffic observations from your perspective and through planning board?
Sure. Yeah. Dave Fanslaw, City Planning.
I'll have to agree, it is kind of awkward through there, definitely with traffic patterns as it is right now.
Yeah. Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. I'll tackle the off-site traffic pattern. Every time we get an application for planning board approval, sometimes when it moves on to city council, our traffic engineering division and public works looks at the traffic patterns. They had no concern about the traffic patterns on the public streets in this area. We also look at the internal circulation system for the, in private parking lots and drive aisles and parking stalls and how they lay out, and we felt this was acceptable. As far as the crossroads redevelopment plan, it doesn't restrict, necessarily restrict certain uses. In fact, since most, you know, pretty recently, on the northeast corner of 72nd Dodge, there have been a few, two fast food restaurants added to that site recently, in and around the time that the crossroads redevelopment plan was taking place. So, you know, it's not meant to restrict certain uses, but like Mr. Thielen said, it's an ACI district. Obviously, the 72nd Dodge corridors are important to, important to the city, so we have those ACI urban design corridors overlaid on these properties. So this, this fits in. I mean, like, it's zone GI, the use permit. It'll meet all of the highest standards that we have, so.
Okay. Thank you. No further lights?
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
No.
Gurnett.
No.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-three is adopted, five to two. Liquor, item number 24, Harney Street Tavern, 1215 Harney Street, catering liquor license application to location, the president of Class C license.
Public hearing on number 24 is today. Are there any proponents?
Brady Bach, QB Group LLC, doing business as Harney Street Tavern at 1215 Harney Street.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-four is
Thank you.
Adopted, seven to zero. Item number 25, Grant Street Bar, 89 19, Grant Street, request permission for a special design license for a beer garden on June 6th from 12 noon to 1 a.m. Music would end at 1 a.m.
Public hearing on number 25 is today. Proponents, please.
Michael Litwin, 7572 Charles Street, Stewart Incorporated.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Seen none, public hearing's closed. Ms. Milton.
If you could come back up, sir. Hi, if you'd just state your name one more time.
Michael Litwin.
Mr. Litwin, as we deal with most of these requests, we would ask that you would voluntarily restrict the time to midnight instead of 1 a.m.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Would that be okay?
That's fine.
Okay. With that, and when we do that with almost everybody that applies for the music, outdoor music
Okay.
...in the beer garden.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you very much. It helps with the neighbors, so.
Is that a motion?
Motion, a motion to amend, to have a midnight.
Second.
On the music. Yes, just on the music.
Second.
Thank you. Motion, a second. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jaram? Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat? Yes. Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty-five is approved, is amended, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda should be taken up by City Council may following the consent agenda in the order which they remove, unless otherwise provided by City Council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items number twenty-six through thirty-four were held on April twenty-eighth.
Motion approved, a second.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jaram? Milton? Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat? Yes. Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty-six through thirty-four, passed, seven to zero.
Public hearings on agenda items number thirty-five through forty-two are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. See none. Public hearings are closed.
Approved.
Second. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jaram? Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Gurnat? Mr. President?
Yes.
The resolutions are adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant City Council Rule seven F, agenda items number forty-four through forty-six should be delivered over three years for publication of public hearing. Ordinance is on second reading. Item forty-seven, ordinance to close necessity of acquiring
I think we missed number forty-three, Mr. Thompson.
Which one?
Forty-three, Mr. Thompson.
Oh, nice, safety going. I missed that one. Item forty-three, resolution of detached agreement between the City of Omaha and the National Safety Council to provide program for public education regarding fireworks safety is approved. We have an amendment of the whole requested by the Law Department.
Public hearing on number forty-three is continued today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Second.
Just motion, a second. Is there a staff person? Just come, I'll explain so people know what the amendment does versus previous week's. Is that finance, or?
Yeah, finance.
Yeah.
In broad city finance. Basically, it was just, the funding was cut from fifty thousand to twenty-five thousand, and then the savings would be used to pay for the land bank item that was on the agenda earlier.
So, it keeps the land bank whole as intended at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which we just approved, but establishes a, a bit less of a budget for public, for fireworks safety, but one that's been presented and accepted by the Safety Council, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Just motion, a second. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jaram? Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Gurnat? Mr. President?
Yes.
Forty-three, the amendment of the whole is adopted, seven to zero. Now, pursuant to City Council Rule seven F, agenda items forty-four through forty-six should be delivered over three years for publication of public hearing. Item forty-seven, ordinance to close necessity of acquiring private property for the purpose of constructing the Hundred and Eightieth Street and Hundred and Ninety-Second Street and Pacific Street intersection improvement projects.
Public hearing on number forty-seven is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item forty-eight, ordinance to close necessity of appropriating property located Eighteenth and Clark Street for implementation of the consolidated plan and the attached agreement with, to acquire the property is hereby approved.
Public hearing on number forty-eight is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item forty-nine, ordinance approving a bid for McNeil Cleaning LLC for janitorial cleaning services at six Omaha Public Library Facilities.
Public hearing on number forty-nine is today. Are there any proponents?
Latoya Thomas with McNeil's Cleaning, forty-four zero-three North Sixty-Second Street, number thirty-nine.
Thank you.
Regina Dell, Omaha Public Library, two fifteen South Fifteenth Street.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Ms. Milton?